Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mary Commission Meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting for May 13, 2019. And the next thing on the agenda will be the invocation. Commissioner Edwin Taylor will do the introductions. Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I am so glad to have Mayor Divya Caldwell from Hattaw Moore Temple to come and do the invocation. She is a member of Hattaw Moore Temple upon the leadership of Pastor Renault Scott. She served as a mother of the church and also one of the members of the church. At this time, Ms. Caldwell, you will go to the podium and give us a word of prayer. If you want to, a word of encouragement, if you know. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. At this time, let us pray.
Thank you.
Father God, we thank you. We thank you for this very day, God, that you have made. And you let us be in this day, God, and we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, look on us on tonight. Look on the mayor, God. Lord, look on every city commissioner, Lord. Look on everybody that is attending, God. God, look on them now. Bless them in a special way, God. Oh, God, let this meeting be a success. Help them to reach decisions, God. Make good decisions, God. Strong decisions for this city, God. And Lord, you do these things. We're going to give you praise. We're going to bless you. We're going to give you glory and honor in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mother.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. As always, we're going to have the Coffey County Navy Junior ROTC to lead us to the pledge. And tonight, we have Lieutenant Junior Grade Moreno. If you would, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
So moved.
Spin motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have presentation of life-saving award to Douglas police officers. And our new chief is going to lead us through that. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Commission.
Good evening.
I've actually got two awards that I want to present. I know only one makes it to the agenda. But I knew if one of the corporals found out he was on the agenda, he wouldn't come. Because he's that type of person. But we have tonight with us Louis. Luis Villalain Gomez? Is that for now? Right. If you would, come up. Corporal Bickers out there?
Yeah.
This is Luis, and he is a student at Westside Elementary. On March the 20th, Luis had a medical episode at school. And the Code Blue team jumped into action and did CPR and brought him back to life.
Amen.
He was transferred to Children's Healthcare Atlanta where he made a full recovery. And the school board actually had a ceremony. And Corporal Bickers was given a Project Save Hero Award for his life-saving efforts. And one of the corporals, if he knew he was getting this, he wouldn't have been here. But he's also getting a life-saving award from the Douglas Police Department. And we appreciate your service. And you also get a pen to go in your uniform. And y'all, I think it's got to be that. We start with the first. Thank you, Mayor. I'll go up with the mayor. I'll go up with the mayor, you and Luis and your chief, y'all.
That's awesome.
I like your shirt. I want a shirt like that.
All right. Eight days later, on March the 28th, Officer Hudson Moore was going to training in a neighboring county when he drove upon a wreck on US 221 going out of the county up here. He found a truck turned over in a ditch. It was in the water. He was able to locate the victim, Mr. Cole Giddens. And Cole's here with us.
Wow.
He started CPR and conducted CPR until the paramedics arrived. And Mr. Cole Giddens has also made a full recovery.
You also get a pen for your uniform.
And we appreciate the work that you do, and you are a credit to law enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Good job. We're glad to see you.
Yes, we can have chairs right there. With a phrase on it. He's got a phrase on it right there.
Yep, that's right. Everybody's right. We could go home right now, couldn't we, y'all? We can't go home right now.
You ready? It's so cold. You can come out of here. You can go in the front. We'll slide this way, sir. Okay? There we go. Good job. Don't that believe in God? Ain't God good? Ain't God good?
Amen.
Can I say amen? Amen. Never know what you're gonna mean. Never know.
Good job. Is Hakeem here?
Does Hakeem made it?
Is he here? Does Hakeem made it? Okay, we'll come back to that.
Okay, we'll come back. So on item number six, a special presentation for Chief of the Day. We're going to skip over that because Chief of the Day hasn't arrived yet, okay? So the next thing that we're going to talk about is the Consent Agenda. And the city manager will lead us through that.
All right, Mayor and Commission, we have nine items coming over from the consent agenda. The first item is approval of the April 22nd, April 25th budget work session amendments. Item four, approval of the performance to the Historical Preservation Committee. Item five, approval to the point to the Downtown Development Authority. Item six, a request to rebid RFP for the sale of the Martin Center with a $100,000 as the opening bid level. Item seven, to approve the waiver, the fee waiver request for CCA with GM. Item eight, approval of purchasing water and sewer supplies for the Davis Complex bid. Item 10, approval of the 2018 L-MIG-funded streets for the bid for that, for payment of those items. Item 11, approval of the voting delegates for the GMA Annual Convention. And item 12, approval of the election of the GMA District 11 officers for the 2019-2020 year.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the items.
So moved.
Spin motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. And I do believe we have a few items that we had to bring forward. So on item number eight, work session items for discussion.
Mayor Commission, we have three items coming over for y'all to take action on tonight. First item would be item two from the work session to discuss the alcoholic beverage license request for Cing Plus. That'd be Roger Goddard.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I'm here to present an alcoholic beverage application for Roger Carr, who is the current alcohol licensee for Max Minute Mark that's on McDonald Road. They are changing their corporation name to Cing Plus, and therefore they haven't applied for a new alcoholic beverage license. So I'm here to seek Congress' approval for the application for alcoholic beverage license.
Okay. Commissioner Pearson, that is your department, lead us through it.
I oppose this during the work session, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Moore?
I voted for it.
Commissioner McNeil?
I too voted for this, Mayor, since they were already, they've already been approved years ago.
Commissioner Taylor?
I'm good.
Commissioner Dern?
I oppose.
Commissioner, well, Mayor Pro Temp?
I'm okay with it.
And I'm okay with it.
Can y'all, we gotta make a motion.
Yeah, I'll be able to say that. Just get into tally. At this time, I entertain a motion for, spin motion, second. Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Next item is item three from the work session, discuss the alcoholic beverage license application for the Block Convenience Store. Roger Goddard and I lead the mayor.
I have to step out of the chamber because I'm actually the applicant and the owner of the property. Thank you. You heard her.
Well, I think we're going to go, so.
I'll handle it from here. Well, we'll start down here. What's the consensus on it?
My consensus was I opposed against it because that's in the heart of my district and my end of the community. And we have so much going on, so much within violence, so much within drugs. I oppose it from coming there because it's in the heart of my district. And I just feel like we need to develop that to a positive thing. And also, I would like to reach out to the business owners of those facilities and those places so that we can develop and make that place what it used to be. Because it's a landmark for us, the George Washington Carver Shopping Center. So that's why I opposed it. And I just feel like, deep in my heart, I mean, that's, that's just too close.
Commissioner Taylor?
I'm good with it.
Commissioner McNeil?
I had questioned Mr. Goddard as to the fact that they've done their due diligence as far as near churches and schools and everything, and it has been doing. And that was what I had to receive a comfort level about. So I am okay with it.
Commissioner Moore?
Okay.
Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. As I stated in the work session, I also oppose this due to the fact that I, you know, I was hoping that the George Washington Carver Shopping Center could be upgraded to implement some type of after-school tutorials and other positive productive businesses and things that's going to benefit the community. That's where I grew up at all of my life, so it's a very sentimental issue to me. I lived there from the age of two until I went off to college and actually came back from college. So I oppose that facility being able to sell alcohol. I wish, as Commissioner Dern said, wish that the business owners would try to develop something that's going to be more positive for the community and our youth in that area. So based on that, I oppose.
Okay. Chief, do I understand from looking at the work session agenda item that all the legal requirements have been met?
That's correct.
Okay. And background's been done through Chief Edmiston, is that correct?
Myself and Chief Edmiston's both reviewed.
And staff recommends approval, everything checked out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved that we follow the recommendation and approve the license for the application of alcoholic beverage sales for the Block Convenience Store. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So the motion carries.
Thank you. Is the ball getting there?
Next, next item, item nine, conduct the first reading of the ordinance adopting the GMIB's Restated Benefits Retirement Plan. And that'd be thrown out on City Attorney.
This is the first reading. We don't take any action on this tonight. This would be an ordinance to amend and restate the retirement plan for the employees of the City of Douglas, Georgia, in accordance with and subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the attached adoption agreement, any addendum to the adoption agreement, the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefits System Master Plan Document, the GIMBRA's Trust Agreement. When accepted by the authorized officers of the City and GIMBRA, the full goal shall constitute a contract between the City and GIMBRA as authorized by OCGA 47-5-1. This is 37 pages long, so I won't sit here and try to bore you. We'll have a second reading on this one when we may.
It's next week. We're moving the budget before any of the...
It's the 20th?
Yes.
Okay. Great. That's it?
That's all the items from the work session.
Okay. Next is staff comments.
Is Hakeem here yet?
I think maybe they're pulling up.
Okay, let's go ahead and get the staff comments out.
All the items we got tonight is just mention of the mental health fair coming up this weekend at the Central Square Complex from 10 to 2. And just ask staff and commission and citizens at large to come out. This is an opportunity and time to get information. As most of us, you know, we got members and our families. We got situations at our neighbors, and we got situations in schools and stuff. And this is all about information sharing. We have about 35 vendors there that will, that are in the business of helping people. And we also have four concurrent sections going on to talk about some of these situational stuff that's going on. And so just ask the city and county participants to come out. As always, you know, we have on Thursdays, this Thursday, we got 6:00 PM, got the Youth Council. And just ask members to come out and support our youth in the Youth Council. And just want to also take, while ago, and I know the mayor, y'all probably, some of y'all hit this in y'all's closing comments, but these situations where our public safety people, you know, that's the impact that have it, that's happening, you know? And sometimes I know they get a lot of negative comment, you know? Sometimes they want to give people like me a ticket and stuff for, you know, breaking the rules. But they also too, you know, the proverb will get the cat out of the tree and all those kind of things. But tonight's one of those things where we actually saved two lives. And I couldn't hardly read the things while I was getting a little emotional a while ago. But just want to give a shout out to the public safety. That's great, and we appreciate y'all. Because a lot of times you do get the negative publicity, but also at the same time, that's positive thing that has real impact, you know? So we do appreciate all the officer, both the fire and the police. And then in the morning, at Holt's Bakery at 8:00 AM, 8 to 10, we have coffee with a cop. So if you want to go out, and they also have donuts there at Holt's. So maybe donuts would have gone too, you know? But...
Sign me up.
So they do have a program called Coffee with a Cop. If you want to go out and get to know some of the cops, share your interest or whatever, complaints, concerns, whatever, they're there to have coffee with you and talk about those issues. That's all the items from the staff, Mayor.
Great. Is I got here?
No, but I've got, I've got the corporal here.
And what we'll do, we'll wait on Hakeem to come, if he may or may not. But you can go step up here and explain what Chief of the Day was with Hakeem and how it all came about, didn't we?
He won't be forever.
Corporal Kyle Spivey works extra duty security, going up at Indian Creek Elementary. And there was a young man that goes to school there, he's in pre-k or kindergarten? Pre-k. Hakeem Rosier told Corporal Spivey that he wanted to be a police officer when he grew up. So Corporal Spivey went out on his own and bought him a Halloween costume, police uniform. And those pictures were posted on Facebook, and it went viral. Hakeem was featured on Fox 5 Atlanta. We had 2,500 likes, 70,000 views, and 1,100 shares for Chief Rosier. And we told him, I told him, told Facebook, if we got enough likes and shares, I would make him Chief of the Day. So he came down, we made him Chief of the Day, we took his picture, he got to sit in the police car with blue lights on. He took a tour of the police department. And we have, we have a public service announcement that I don't want to reveal quite yet. We're still, we're going to do some work on it. My IT guy's gone, or my technical guy's gone to school this week. We're going to do some public service announcements with him. Click it or ticket, and 100 Days of Peace is coming up, the Georgia Officer of Highway Safety Initiative, trying to keep people safe, save lives, keep DUIs off the streets. And we're going to use him, his public service announcement for that. But I wanted to give a commendation to Corporal Spivey. This commendation's hereby awarded and presented to Corporal Spivey for his commitment to community policing. On or about April 25, 2019, Corporal Spivey, while working extra duty at Indian Creek Elementary, purchased a police uniform for a child who told him he wanted to be a police officer too. As a result, the student, Hakeem Rosier, was made Chief for the Day. It is with the Douglas Police Department. Corporal Spivey, you are a prime example of the pride we take in our job and selfless acts that our men and women make to help others and be a part of the community. Your actions are a credit to yourself, this department, and law enforcement profession. Thank you very much for all you do. Sir.
They told me in the hallway, apparently, she needed to go and tell me, say, please. They didn't bring him up here and introduce him to us. They don't have a picture of all of us at the police department, electric department, fire department.
When he shows up, we'll do a formal introduction.
They don't know and they don't care. Good job, Mayor. Chief of the Day. Good deal. We will, next on the agenda is the mayor and commission comments. And please be mindful, if Chief Rosier should show up, we're going to pause at a natural break and bring the chief out, okay? Let's start with Commissioner Moore.
Me? Yes. Well, I just wanted to hope all the mothers had a happy Mother's Day. I told them 60-something years ago, my wife, she wasn't a mother then, but I bought her a gown for Mother's Day in 1957, a few years ago. And I also want to say, over at Westside Elementary School, my daughter is the nurse over there, and she's the one that took care of the young man that actually died. And they revived him back with those paddle boards, the first time they'd ever used them. And she don't like her picture, but anyhow.
Proud of our children.
So we just hope everybody does the best they can and hope we get good, positive reports from our police department. I had one yesterday. And just keep on having it, keep, keep on doing the job. And thank you very much.
Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, I'm sitting here making some notes. We've had a busy, busy last couple weeks, I think, here in Douglas and Coffey County. And we entertained the governor. We had the privilege of having the governor, Premium Peanut, hosted a reception and a signing, a document signing for him with several legislators and senators from this area. And that's just something you don't forget when you meet folks like that. They were very humble and very kind and very gracious, and that was very well received, I think, in our community. I had the privilege of attending a conference down at Jekyll Island. It was the Electric Cities, Electric Cities of Georgia Conference, ECG Summit. And Commissioner Taylor, Mike, I think you were there. And we sort of split up. We used the theory, divide and conquer. And the three of us tried to attend all the sessions and, and just to see what we could bring back to all of you. And we've got some great ideas at some point we want to share. I think, I think one of the things that I took away from that conference was seeing what other cities are doing with regard to building up their children, to educate, not only education, but self-esteem, as Charlie mentioned, mental health, the things that are going on in our community, to raise awareness, to build self-esteem in our children. But I just, I want to say that one of the gentlemen who spoke, and I'm trying to remember where he was from, I can't remember if he was from Acworth or just where, he did a great presentation. But he also quoted a famous man who said, "If you're planning, if your city and your leaders are planning for a year, if they just plan for a year at a time, plant a garden. If you're planning for 10 years, plant a tree. If you're planning for 100 years, educate your children." And I think that's so true because they are our future. And their self-esteem and what they bring to this table, what their knowledge. We learned so many things, y'all. There's, there's just a scope of things that we in South Georgia don't quite, we can't fathom. I mean, I'm, I'm sitting there listening to, oh, there he is. I'm being upstaged, and I love it. Okay, very good, y'all. This is our chief for the day. All right, let me let him break in here, Mayor, okay? He is precious. No, no, please.
Shut up.
I love it. Push, I'll go back. I get to have another three minutes. I was interrupted. I get to have another three minutes.
No, you don't.
You could finish your comments.
All right. I want to introduce you to Chief Rosier. He was Chief of the Day. And he wants to be a police officer one day, so we made him one. And he has got a lot, a lot of likes on Facebook.
Lot of attention.
He's been on Fox 5 Atlanta News, so he's turned into quite a star. We appreciate the work that the officers here do. They're making a positive impact on our community.
But he also quoted a famous man who said, "If you're planning, if, if your city and your leaders are planning for a year, if they just plan for a year at a time, plant a garden. If you're planning for ten years, plant a tree. If you're planning for a hundred years, educate your children." And I think that's so true because that, they are our future. And, um, their self-esteem and what they bring to this table, what their, their knowledge. We learned so many things, y'all. There's, there's just a scope of things that we in South Georgia don't quite, uh, we can't fathom. I mean, I'm, I'm sitting there listening to, oh, there he is. I'm being upstaged and I love it. Okay, very good, y'all, this is our chief for the day. All right, let me let him break in here, Mayor, okay? He is precious. No, no, please. I love it. Push, I'll go back, I get to, I get to have another three minutes. I was interrupted, I get to have another three minutes.
You could finish your comments.
All right. I want to introduce you to Chief Rosier. He was chief of the day. And, uh, he wants to be a police officer one day, so we made him one. And, uh, he has got a lot, a lot of likes on Facebook. He's been on Fox Five Atlanta News, uh, so he's turned into quite a star. Uh, we appreciate the work that the officers here do. Uh, they're making a positive impact on our community and, uh, and this is a prime example of what we want to be.
Amen.
Amen, all right. They are, I love it. One of the best looking policemen I've ever seen, I tell you. Good job, Mama, good job.
Come on in, Chief. Right there.
Get up there with him.
That is adorable.
That's awesome.
All right, Chief, hey, Chief, you need to tell them one thing for me. Say buckle up Douglas. I want all the police officers that are here, uh, some of them have left, but I want all the police officers to come in and get a picture with the chief, everybody that's left, a lot of them have had to go home. But I want everybody that's here tonight from the police department to come and get a picture with him. Mom?
Mom.
Hey, how are you? You feeling good?
For real, I thought you were late.
All right, let's everybody be chief of hand.
Come back to see us, okay? Bye-bye. Now I'll finish, Mayor. See there, y'all? But no, no, that's just, that's the punctuation mark to what I was saying, y'all. We're building leaders in this community, I just, I'm so proud of that. Thank y'all so much. Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Pierce?
You with them?
Yes, thank you, I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I thought she had quite a bit more to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I'd just like to, um, wish all of the mothers a happy Mother's Day as well and fathers, because it takes mothers and fathers to raise our children and to raise them successfully. Uh, just want to remind everybody about the eight to ten in the morning at Holt's Coffee with the Cop. I've had several citizens asking me about, uh, meeting the new chief. So I'm not sure if he'll be there, um, he'll be there tomorrow. So it'd be an opportunity for some of y'all to come out and, and meet him and talk with him about concerns or whatever. Also, I want to reiterate about the mental health fair at the gym on Saturday. This Saturday, Central Square Gym from, uh, I think they say at ten to two. And, you know, a lot of people think that, um, it's a stereotype if you have mental health issues. But you know, I'm about to the point of believing that, in the society that we live in now, it's so stressful and, and whatever, to, it's probably, uh, not normal if you don't have some type of mental health issues because we really live in a very stressed society. So for those people who think that it's something wrong with trying to seek help if you're having, uh, some, some problems, don't, don't feel that way. If you, if you feel like you're stressing or whatever, please go and seek out some, some, uh, attention, medical assistance. Because during the time, uh, when I lost my son, you know, I just really had to, uh, go and get some counseling because, uh, sometimes there are things that happen in our lives that we can't handle on our own. And I know we, we have God, but it also helps to talk with therapists and people who are trained in, in those areas. Um, so the other thing, I'd like to commend, uh, our police officers who have helped save lives, uh, our public safety people and for this young man that served as chief of the day, for him to say that he would like to be a policeman, that lets me know that somebody really had an influence on him. They were doing something good for him to feel that way. And, and we need our public safety, uh, personnel. So when you see our public safety officials, firemen, policemen or whatever, thank them for their services because their jobs are not easy. And last thing that I have, uh, Mr. Mayor, on this Saturday at, uh, two o'clock at Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, we're going to have, um, a renowned speaker, Mr. Joe Beasley. Mr. Beasley, uh, he's probably eighty-something years old, but he is, he's renowned for working as a civil rights leader. He has worked with, um, Jesse Jackson, with Rainbow Push, he has worked with Southern Christian Leadership Conference, SCLC. So he's going to come into town on this Saturday around two P.M. at Shallow. And, and it's a free event, so anybody who would like to hear him, and there will be a few others, please feel free to come out and, and enjoy that presentation. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
You are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that, um, I had opportunity to, to, uh, to attend the economic development sermon that was held out in Jekyll Island. And, uh, it was a very, very learning experience for me. I had opportunity to, uh, be in a couple of classes, which was, uh, the industrial economic development and also the retail commercial development. And I, you know, things are changing so rapidly in this day and time to, um, if you don't stay up with the system, you're going to get left behind. And they shared a lot of information, um, that's going on, is going to happen, you know, everything. And just like Ms. Cindy said, that, um, we want to get with the city manager and the mayor and C.K., we, you know, uh, create some of the ideas that they came up with that, so that we can be, uh, up with what's going on today. But I did really enjoy, appreciate, um, the ones that took time out to give me the opportunity to go down so that I can develop myself and be more aggressive of what's going on so that I can make the city of Douglas more prosperous, you know, everything. To the three officers that done what they did this past week, thank you all because a lot of times we get bad, pessimistic, but hey, those three guys really, really, you know, made a difference in Coffee County. Thank y'all for the support that y'all give for, uh, Coffee County because it's not an easy job. Uh, continue, ladies and gentlemen, keep yours cut clean, snakes are, they begin to crawl. Um, um, matter of fact, uh, just before I come, I, uh, had to chase one down. Um, uh, so, uh, snakes are crawling, they're looking for somewhere to go. It's hot weather, so please keep the grass cut. Well, neither by yard, but it's neither by this yard. But, um, uh, um, please keep it, you know, your grass cut. Also, we have two weeks of junk day. You have any junk around your house, we have two Saturdays out of the month that you can bring your junk down to the pole and drop it off. Uh, Mayor, I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Commissioner Durham?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We would like to wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day, belated Mother's Day. That's a blessing to have a living mother. Also, pray for the ones that have lost mothers, you, you know, when it comes to that occasion. Mother's Day is a tough time for me because I lost my grandfather and my grandmother in two different years on that Mother's Day weekend. But we have a lot of stuff that's going on in the city of Douglas. I attended two ribbon cuttings last week, which was Ward Monument, and it was a great ribbon cutting. Mr. Doug Ward, and I also attended Johnson Pilgrim Service out there, ribbon cutting. And Chris Johnson, he was, it's an awesome building, looks real nice, and he put a lot into it. And I like to say that getting behind him and supporting them one hundred percent because that's what keep our city moving, our small businesses. And also I would like to thank, thank our citizens for telling us, like, the, the grounds and the grass that have grown up or if they need dirt. And I contacted Mr. Kevin or Mr. Mack and they give everything that's needed to the citizens. And so we'd like to thank all the departments for that. And that's about all, but cherish your mother while you have your mother and while she's living. Do all that you can do, do all the right that you can do as an individual. Because at, at the end of the day, you will have, uh, and you will have a reward at the end. And we just like to say thank you. Thank you to the police officers for your services. Thank you to the fire department for your services. And I appreciate that what y'all did. Appreciate that what y'all did. And I would, I would like to challenge our commissioners. And Mayor, please stop by the fire department or stop by the police department and see what's going on because they wanted me to play volleyball and I played volleyball. And that's personnel and, and I really appreciate that. And that's all I have to say.
I'm around you, man.
War.
Thank you, Commissioner Durham. Mayor Prochett?
I'd like to, good evening. I'd like to echo, uh, Commissioner Durham's thoughts in regard, you know, we had the opportunity to honor our mothers yesterday. Um, I'd like to share a couple of thoughts. This is from, uh, a statement that our church leaders made several years ago. "Motherhood is near to divinity. It is the highest, holiest service to be assumed by mankind. It places her who honors its holy calling and service next to the angels." Um, something that, a statement we released that, um, regarding the families, that I think relates to that, says, "Happiness in family life is most likely to be achieved when founded upon the teachings of the Lord Jesus Christ. Successful marriages and families are established and maintained on principles of faith, prayer, repentance, forgiveness, respect, love, compassion, work and wholesome recreational activities. By divine design, fathers are to preside over their families in love and righteousness and are responsible to provide for the necessities of life and protection for their families. Mothers are primarily responsible for the nurture of their children. In these sacred responsibilities, fathers and mothers are obligated to help one another as equal partners. Disability, death or other circumstances may necessitate individual adaptation. Extended families should lend support when needed." Um, I think these thoughts echo probably what we all feel about our mothers and the women in our lives who fill those roles as needed, when needed, often, uh, without being asked or without being, uh, compensated for what they do. So, uh, um, my mother has passed away, but I pay tribute to her and to my grandparents, my grandmothers, for what they've done for me. Uh, I would not be here except for them, for the example they set for me and for their teachings. And I know, uh, all of you probably feel the same way and that is a, is a blessing. Um, our community will be no stronger than our families. And our mothers are at the heart of that. And so we salute you and thank you for what you do and what you continue to do. Um, I also had the opportunity to change in gears, I had the opportunity to attend the, uh, Electric Cities of Georgia Economic Development Summit at Jekyll Island, as been mentioned. Um, we learned a lot of important things. It helps me in my role to understand how economic development works. You know, business is the lifeblood of our community and we want to provide opportunities for our citizens to make sure they have jobs and take care of their families as well as provide future opportunities for our children that wish to stay and raise their families here. And that's not going to happen unless we take a proactive approach and take care of the businesses that are here and work to ensure that we provide an environment to, uh, nurture and attract future businesses, either to expand or to relocate here or to locate here as a startup, as some of our, uh, entrepreneurs have done for our city and our region. One thing that I recognize in listening to, uh, the presentations, um, we have a, fortunately we have a good foundation established here and I don't, I don't think that's by any accident. I think our, uh, the men and women who have been in our place before and on the commission, on the county commission in economic development, uh, they've done a good job in helping to develop those areas and making sure that, um, we're trying to do things in a way to be competitive. But as Commissioner McNeil stated, we do need to continually pay attention to what we're doing with our children. And it, that's one thing that was pointed out in several presentations, is how important our education system is and how that links to, um, a trained, developed workforce that is ready to go to work. And they said, "In this day and time, when you have a..." And I did the industrial development track, that is one of the primary, uh, indicators of whether a, a business wants to come into your community is they look at our education system and our workforce. You know, what kind of workers do we have there? And so I wish to encourage our education leaders, I think they do a good job and I wish that, um, they will continue to do so. You know, not only our schools, our Coffee County school system, our private schools here, but, you know, Wiregrass Technical Colleges here and South Florida State College. Um, those are just a couple of things that I've noticed. Also, would like to recognize, um, you know, our city employees. I know in addition, and I'll get to that in a second, what we saw tonight, but, um, just noticed in the last few weeks, um, I've got feedback on some of the great positive interactions people that I, that I know had with our city staff here at City Hall, our customer service people. I notice as I go around, uh, the city, what a great job our public works people are doing, working to ensure that our, our city looks clean and, uh, the grass is cut and the, the shrubs are trimmed and our rice way look good. Um, I noticed, you know, our drainage, I think that situation keeps getting better and better. Before you kind of, I kind of cringed when there was going to be a big rain, wondering where the, the water was going to flood and back up, and it, that seemed to be less and less of a problem every time we had it. Um, appreciate everybody who contributed with the junk drop off that we had. I think that's working and we encourage everybody to continue to do so and take advantage. And of course, last but not least, uh, these police officers, I think, represent the best of what our employees do and what they contribute to our community. Uh, I pay respect to them and, and, um, congratulate them for what they're out there doing. And it's, you notice what happened here, this is not within their job prescription per se, this is what they do above and beyond what they're necessarily paid to do. And I think it, it speaks to their character and what we're trying to do, uh, with all our departments, in particular right now with our police department. It's a reminder of the positive impact that our police officers have in our community. I want to thank Chief Edmiston and really, um, I have to say, this is what I expected, that when we interviewed and hired Chief Edmiston, this is what I expected he would bring to our community to, um, help encourage our officers to be out there, to, to do things, to reach out to our community. I expect to see more of it and I expect we all, that's what's going to happen. Um, you know, on a personal note, uh, Mr. Giddens, his grandfather's cut my hair for the last twenty-something years. Many, you know Mr. Johnny Giddens. And, uh, I went in there to get my haircut and they said, Johnny wasn't there. He was checking my grandson that was in the hospital, it was that young man that was standing here today. And when Johnny got back, he was able to tell me his story and his, you know, of course, it, it's not, I don't think by any accident that officer would have come upon that scene at that particular time and, and pretty, you know, he saved his life and he used those skills that he acquired, uh, in during his training and working for our city. So, I mean, it's just, it's good to see when these things happen. And, uh, and you see these, uh, these young officers that are reaching out and looking out for our community and helping. My wife works at Westside School, she didn't even, I, we have so much going on, I'm not sure if I knew what exactly happened, so I saw it in the paper and, uh, I think I brought her to, oh, yeah, 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 we had the code blue. You know, come to find out, you know, this is the young man that was involved in that. Um, just, it's, you know, sometimes we're quick to complain when things don't go well, but I hope we're equally quick to compliment and to, uh, pay tribute when things go right and things, uh, people get out there and do what they're asked to do, even stretch out beyond what they're asked to do. But thank you, Chief, and thanks, thanks to all our department heads for, for the job that you're doing to keep our city moving in a positive direction. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Prochett. Uh, my comments are as follows. Um, a number of the commissioners, uh, talked about economic development. One of the things that I've learned sitting on the economic development, uh, board is, first of all, they secret, 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 secret. Oh, they secret, 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 secret. I'm like, man, y'all telling it, man, it's hard for me to keep a secret sometimes and I'm telling y'all. But the things that a company looks at before they even consider looking at Douglas, you would be amazed. You would just absolutely be amazed. Our Facebook page, our commission meetings are at the top. Uh, when you go to Tifton and you go purchase something and they ask you for that zip code, oh, that is actually tripped. There's a device on your cell phone that if you don't turn it off...
There's a device on your cell phone that if you don't turn it off, it can tell that you left Ambrose, and you went to Publix in Tifton, that you went there and you purchased something. Looks at the healthcare that we have, that we provide in our community, the education, they look at the fire department, the ISO rating, they look at utilities, how much water, how much power. I mean, before there's even a conversation, and they call the, up at the state, it's on the website, you would just be amazed at little things that impact the industry. I remember the last time I served as the mayor, we were entertaining a possible industry, it was about a hundred jobs. Two reasons why that company did not locate you, two reasons. First thing, no skateboard park. Son was an avid skateboarder, just bottom line. The other thing is, the other son had a health issue, that if they had a death episode, they had to be at the hospital in a matter of hours in order for the child to receive that treatment. At the time, we didn't have that treatment. So, when we talk about economic development, there's just a lot of things that go into it, and I did not know that. And the education system, and we talk about the workforce, the workforce, the workforce, the workforce, the workforce. Our workforce, we, on the Economic Development Authority, we actually market the City of Douglas and Coffee County as a region. We normally go out about thirty-five miles, thirty-five to forty miles, and draw a circle around the City of Douglas. The City of Douglas population is normally somewhere around eleven thousand five hundred. During the day, it creeps above thirty thousand. So, we almost triple our population, because so many people are coming into our communities. So, that's some other data that the EDA looks at, traffic patterns. I mean, you'd just be amazed at, okay, how many cars pass by this door? They can say, "Yea, yea, nay," right there. If they can't find, they need twenty-five acres, and we can only find them twenty-four and a half, we get kicked off the list. It's just a lot of stuff. My next thing is, Chief Rojer, you know, a few years ago when I was in college, well, a couple of decades now, we talked about police. And one of the things is, Professor Andrews brought this up. Did you know that almost eighty-five percent of all young boys wanna be police officers up until the seventh grade? In the seventh grade, something changes. They don't wanna be a police officer anymore. So, I'm a firm believer, in order for us to be effective in policing, our police department has to be led correctly. Our police department needs to mirror the citizens that it serves. I see police officers all the time engaging, I always like to go up and talk to them, see how they're doing, and you know, I encourage everybody to go have coffee with the cop in that doughnut. And our new chief said, "Hey, look, you could always come and talk to them. Go talk to them. Has an open door, use it, go talk to them." And one of the things I always like people to understand, I think in order to be a firefighter or to be a police officer, you have to have that it. You have to have that it, where something triggers in you that your personal safety is not the number one priority. You have to have it, just think about that. Who in their right mind's gonna run into a burning building? Everybody on the planet is trying to move away, where there's a gout over there causing some trouble, everybody's trying to get away. Here come the police, go ahead, full force. You have to have that it, where your personal safety is second. Second. And that's one of the things I always admire about the firefighters in our police department. And Chief Rojer, hey, we got him young, let's see if we can keep him, let's see if we can keep him.
You better watch out for your job, you know, in just a few years, he's gonna be, he might be after your job, that's right.
So, my other thing is, I had the opportunity to attend the Community Foundation over at Wheeler Park. They had a group come down from, I think it was Philadelphia, and they had these nice raps out, "What do you think that this park can transition to?" And, I mean, it was just all over the place, just what it could be. I mean, just to sit by.
I went to the last one, and they're fabulous, they're wonderful.
And take a look at what the possibilities could be. So, I was talking to some of the members of the Community Foundation, I was like, "Lady, where does this end up? We wanna do all the parks. We gotta figure this out first." And we decided to start with Wheeler Park. I mean, this is just, you know, a playground for little toddlers and our smaller children. And one of the rules about the playground has to have a fence in it. You can't be inside the playground unless you have a child. If you don't have a child, you can't go inside the playground. It's just that slide for the handicapped child, that path to make sure it's accessible for handicaps. I think that that Community Foundation really, really enjoyed myself over there. The other thing is, Thursday at six o'clock here, this will be our new Mayor's Youth Council first meeting. Ms. Wagneta and Ms. Williams have told me that they are a little robust, so, but that's what we want, that's what we want. I heard something this morning that I hadn't heard in a while. It is not important for me to be understood when I'm trying to understand your point of view. And sometimes we get so engulfed that we want somebody to understand us, and we're trying to help someone, and we negate what their position. So, always mindful of that, and please come out, support the Mayor's Youth Council. I'm looking forward for it, I'm a little excited about that. I want to congratulate CCA tennis and baseball state champions. Want to make sure that, hopefully, we can try to reach out to them and get them down here. Let's show them a little look. We appreciate them going out there, the coaches, the staff, the principals, and everybody out there supporting those children. My wife, actually, we actually had planned on attending it, but we thought it was this weekend, and it wasn't, so I apologize for that. The other thing is, the Mental Health Fair. Mr. Davis has hit all my talking points on the Mental Health Fair. This is serious. This is serious. You will be surprised at the number of people that are impacted by mental health. Not only the person suffering from mental health issues, but the caregivers, the toll that it takes on a caregiver. You see, in some cities, they have adult daycares just to give that provider an opportunity. But my thing is always, what happens when that crisis happened at three o'clock in the morning? What happens at, what do we do? Who do we talk to? How do we handle that situation? We're gonna start to answer that question in the City of Douglas, because we want to be a city that is impactful on all the lives of our citizens, and this is something that is near and dear to my heart. This is what I do for a living in my other capacity. The majority of my clients have mental issues, and we have to take certain training to be able to communicate with them. So, I will be there, learning as much as I can and pushing this agenda as hard as I can. I think that the mental health piece is important. It is important. I do want to circle back to our firefighters and our police officers, the two police officers that saved lives. I can't imagine being a parent and getting that call that your child is in trouble. I just can't imagine that. And then to know that the man upstairs sends somebody by at the right time that's willing to risk their lives to go get your child, and you get your child by. Man, I'd be like David, I think I'd dance out my clothes on that one. You just don't know. I'm so grateful for those guys being who they are. My next to the last thing is the Touchdown Club. You know, remember the Touchdown Club? We got that boat, it's fourteen feet, twenty horsepower, and you get the trailer with it. Ten dollars, that's all you gotta do is ten dollars. And we have various locations. We want to be able to support the Coffee Hydrogens and our sports programs. Please, ma'am, please, sir, if you will, buy a whole bunch of tickets, buy a whole bunch of tickets. That's the Touchdown Club. My last comment is gonna be about Mother's Day. Mother's Day, Mother's Day, Mother's Day, you hear me talk about my mom all the time, talk about my mom all the time, mom, 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 mom. I get an opportunity that in my phone, mama still works, and I try to call that as often as possible. Sometimes I don't like what my mom has to say, 'cause I try to tell her, "I'm fifty-five, woman, I'm fifty, you're still my child, I'm never gonna grow up." So, but I just want to say, I love my mom, appreciate everything that she does. My wife decided that she just wanted to chill out on Mother's Day, and I always look at Mother's Day as an investment for Father's Day. So, if you didn't get down on Mother's Day, don't be expecting anything on Father's Day, okay? Now, Father's Day is next month. I did good, Chevelle, I did good, mama. So, I need something, you know what I mean? Y'all check with me, I got a couple of items, I got a couple of items, okay? 'Cause I need some new tennis shoes, just saying, need new tennis shoes. But with that being said, I am done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion second, any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, stand adjourned.